It seems strange not to call the meeting to order before we start, but we're going to have the certificate of election to office and the oath of office from our city clerk, Bernie Nelson.
I'd like to extend a welcome to everyone, Mayor Reese, our council members, members of the families of the newly elected officials, and our viewing audience here in the gallery and at home. Right now, I'd like to invite our newly elected council members to join me out front. The City of Wilmer conducted a general election on November 5th, 2024, which resulted in the citizens re-electing two council members to their respective wards and electing newly council, new council members to wards one and two. These results were canvassed before a quorum of the board on November 14th, 2024. In accordance with the Wilmer City Charter, Section 9.04, every council member, elected or appointed official, and board and commission members shall, before entering upon the duties of their office, take and subscribe an oath of office as follows. Please repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the City Charter of the City of Wilmer.
And the City Charter of the City of Wilmer.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
And I will faithfully execute and discharge.
The duties of the office of city council member.
The duties of the office of city council member.
For the City of Wilmer.
For the City of Wilmer.
County of Candyohai.
County of Candyohai.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
According to law and to the best of my abilities and understandings.
According to law and to the best of my abilities and understandings.
As a city clerk in chief office of, in charge of voting, I would like to take this opportunity to present you with this certificate of election, and I ask that you take a moment to sign the oath before returning to your seats. Mayor Reese, you lower your hand. Thank you.
Congratulations and welcome. We'll call the meeting to order, and we'll start with roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Fagerlee.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
And Sholdes.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've asked Pastor Rod Race to pray and do an invocation.
Thank you. Good to be here this evening. Beautiful, balmy, mosquito-free, wonderful Wilmer, Minnesota evening. Let us pray. Father God, I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance. May you generously give each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern our community. Give Mayor Reese and city council members, city leaders, staff, and staff wisdom so that they may solve issues and bring stability and prosperity to our community. We pray for the newly elected council members Gardner and Gilbertson and the re-elected councillor members Ask and Butterfield. Bless them and their families for their service to our city. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you, Rod. Any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Offer motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. You've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerlee.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Sholdes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Next, we'll meet our new manager of the MUC, Jaren Smith. Welcome, Jaren. We're pleased to have you here.
Yeah, good to be here. I don't know if you want me to introduce myself?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Jaren Smith. I've been in the community all my life. My wife works at the Community Christian School here in town, and I've got four daughters. I've rubbed shoulders along and worked alongside many of you in different community events. My family was active in getting the Village Children's Museum off the ground here in Wilmer. I've been part of a lot of chamber events. I currently serve on the United Way Board. And then on the Wilmer Municipal Utilities End, I started in 2010. I got my professional engineering license in 2014, and I've been working here for 14 years. So it's really exciting to be moving up, climbing the ladder corporately and professionally. And I love the Wilmer community. I helped build the Robins Island Playground. I thought that was a great initiative. I want to see the utility grow. I want to see staff grow, and I want to see Wilmer thrive. So thank you so much for this opportunity. Any questions?
Congratulations, Jaren, and welcome. We look forward to working with you. Any questions for many of the councillors?
Thank you so much. I kind of thought this was a test, being a playoff night.
Thank you, Jaren. All right. I don't know. We don't need a motion on that, do we?
Yes, you do.
We do.
Yes.
Okay. So we need a motion to what? I see I was supposed to call on you, and I apologize.
That's all right. We're going to have a motion to accept the hiring of WMU Jaren Smith for general manager.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerlee.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. From there, we're going to go into our organization, reorganization resolutions, and the first is a resolution to elect Mayor Pro Tem. I would, as mayor, would like to see councilmember Osk continue as Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor Reese, I would make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing councilmember Justin Osk as Mayor Pro Tem for the years '25 and '26.
Second.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor, roll call.
Councilmember Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerlee.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. The next is a resolution to adopt rules of order. Wesley?
You can continue as you have. This is just to adopt standard code of parliamentary procedure that we have used for the last many years, so if there's any change, that's, time is to change now.
So I need a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion to adopt the standard code of parliamentary procedures?
Second.
We got a second discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerlee.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Gilbertson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Next, Wesley, you want to outline maybe the?
Sure. So the next resolution is to adopt the establishing of our city council meetings. This would be the first and third Monday, as we have been meeting so far for the last two years. We would be at 6:30 in the evening, and it would be at the normal meeting date place and would be at the County Health and Human Services Building.
Need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerlee.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
And Gardner.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Next is a resolution designating the West Central Tribune as the official newspaper for the City of Wilmer. I need a motion to that effect.
I can make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Tom? Tom B.
Well, I looked up, because I think last year and the year before got brought about, Lakes Area Review being added in there. We were told it had been in the city. I looked up the statutes and everything this weekend, and it's not the case. We could have any paper that's in the City of Wilmer, in the county, or in adjourned county. That could be a record, a paper of, for legal notices. And that was found on the State of Minnesota and the League of, Minnesota League of Voters. I believe, let me quick pull it up. Yeah, cities. What councilmember Fagerlee brought up. So I would like to move that over to the Lakes Area Review. I believe the county brought this up too, this, the other year.
All right, did I have a motion, Bernie? Yes, I did. So this would be a?
Amendment.
What's that?
Tom's asking to amend the motion. Discussion?
Yeah. Discussion. Councilmember, I don't know what to do now. Justin.
Thank you.
I use the first name. I like that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is the county chose the West Central Tribune as the official paper of record in this cycle. Is that accurate?
Couldn't tell you for sure.
Okay, that's what I believed. And the readership is far, far different. The West Central Tribune dwarfs all of the papers in the area.
Lakes Area does not offer an online presence where West Central does.
It seems to me that changing from anything other than the West Central Tribune just hurts the city's ability and our ability as a council to communicate with our constituents and our voters, the people that have sent us here. So I would be very much in favor of continuing with the West Central Tribune.
Audrey.
I was just questioning the ability to amend that to that because that would be changing it completely. It feels like we need to vote on the motion that was on there, that his request to amend it would be basically changing the whole motion.
Mayor, members of the council, I think the amendment was a valid amendment to the motion. The motion being to designate an official newspaper and the amendment being to change that newspaper. That means the council would need to vote on the amendment, which is, the vote would be on the question of whether to change the official newspaper from the West Central Tribune to the other publication Mr. Butterfield mentioned. But before the council votes on that motion, there are two issues the council needs to be aware of. One is, there is a statutory requirement that when there is at least one newspaper, its office of publication is in the city, that one of the, the paper must be, must have its office of publication in the city. That is a statutory requirement. And then the second issue is something that we had researched several years ago, which is that when one of the, if there are multiple papers in the city and one of them has a certain circulation, which we researched at the time and West Central Tribune did, that paper must be the one designated. I have not updated the research this year, but I can tell you, a couple of years ago when we looked at it, the West Central Tribune was the only newspaper that could be lawfully designated by the city. If the city council would like our office to confirm that is still the case, we certainly could do that, but we have not done so before tonight.
Okay, so really, I don't have a second for the amendment. So is there anybody going to second the amendment? That fails for a second. The original motion is for the West Central Tribune. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
And Fagerlee.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Next is the resolution for council committee member liaison assignments. City administrator.
We have, certainly. So each year for the biennial, we have a list of longstanding committees and boards that we have council liaisons. So you have a listing in here of a draft of who is going to fill the vacant positions. If there's any council member that would like to move or change, this is the time to have that discussion. If there's any change that the council would like to see. So you have the appointed board and commission members on the first page, and along then with our liaisons' positions on the second page of your council packet.
Anyone want change or? Audrey?
Mayor Reese, I, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Reese. I just have two questions. I see that the Wilmer Cable Advisory Board, it says about combining later in 2025, but what's happening with it right now?
Nothing's been happening with it right now.
So we don't have a board?
They haven't been, no, they haven't been meeting at all.
Okay. Then my second question is on the Intergovernmental Planning and Communication Committee. I think last year we had a third, an alternate if one of the two couldn't go because my assumption is you would go to all of the meetings, that you would not be a committee member.
Well, we're not, yeah, we don't vote anyway. It's not a voting.
No, I know that, but that you're to go there. I just am concerned that we have at least two people that can attend that. And I was the alternate last year. I'm not, but I never knew that there was a meeting. So I can't tell you if they met. I can't tell you what they did. Can't tell you whether anybody went. It's just a question. Is, should there be an alternate?
Certainly. Council can appoint an alternate.
Do they meet?
Yes, we do meet.
Quarterly?
Three times, yep.
Okay. Is that something that can be just, if someone can't go, that you could just call and ask someone else to do, to go? To do that and that we would know that?
We could leave it that, that if there's, if Mr. Gardner cannot make it, we certainly can fill, ask somebody else to join. Meetings are usually at 3:30 in the afternoons.
Okay. That sounds great. I'm just concerned that people go.
Okay. Justin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, did we miss downtown Wilmer on this list?
We no longer have a downtown Wilmer board. They have disbanded.
When was that?
Christopher, when did they disband?
If my memory serves me correctly, I believe it was September or October of this year, of last year.
Yep.
Didn't know that.
Maybe it would be helpful to have an update on what's going on with that. We do have a staff person, don't we, or?
We do.
So?
It's kind of in transition yet.
Okay, so we can find out more about that another time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. Any other? Otherwise, we'll vote on, on the way it's laid out here.
I'd offer that motion.
We got a motion.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerlee.
Aye.
And Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Next is a resolution to designate responsible authority data practices. Leslie?
Yes, so this is an annual, no, this is biannual also, to designate the responsible authority for data practices. It, we, in the past, it has been our city clerk that we designate, and that is something that we want to continue, that our city clerk, Bernie Larson, will continue as the person to collect the information and storage and make sure that everything is in order to pass on that data request.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Sholdes.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerlee.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Next is consent items, and I'll call on our city clerk.
Mayor Reese and council members, for your consideration tonight, I have the city council minutes of December 16th, 2024, the municipal utilities commission meeting minutes of December 23rd, '24, the planning commission minutes of December 18th, '24, the planning commission minutes of January 8th, '25, the police commission meeting minutes of December 4th, '24, the police commission meeting minutes of December 18th, '24, resolution appointing official depositories, resolution to authorize electronic funds transfers, a memorandum of agreement and a memorandum of understanding between the City of Wilmer and the Ask Me Local Number 65 General Unit, except and final seal coat project number 2408, Civic Center in Robins Island's security cameras, Civic Center in Robins Island Security Camera Cable and Installation, the Wilmer Firefighters Association lawful gambling application, and the accounts payable report from 12/12/24 to 1/8/25. And for your information, I have the monthly building permit report from December of '24.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerlee.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And Sholdes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Next, I'll call on our operations director, Kyle Box, for an introduction of a cannabis regulation ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight is the introduction, two ordinances actually related to cannabis. First, we'll discuss the cannabis registration ordinance. Wanted to highlight a couple of things here. So again, this proposed ordinance before you tonight is in response to recent legislative changes under the State of Minnesota's cannabis legalization framework. As Minnesota moves forward with legalization of adult-use cannabis, municipalities are asked to establish, asked to establish local regulations to ensure the safe, regulated distribution and use of cannabis products within their community. So in the, in your packet is the, the attached ordinance provides detailed analysis of, of the ordinance regulating cannabis and hemp retail businesses within the City of Wilmer. Again, this ordinance is established as a framework for licensing, operating, and enforcing the rules related to cannabis and lower potency hemp edible, for lower potency hemp edible retailers, as well as temporary cannabis events. Again, the goal is to align with state statute or with state laws while imposing further restrictions and regulations specific to the city. Key themes throughout the ordinance you'll find include the registration requirements, operational restrictions, buffer zones, and enforcement mechanisms, as well as the unique provisions that allow the city itself, if it wishes, to be a cannabis retailer. So we'll go through here. A couple of points I wanted to highlight again. So under the proposed ordinance, we are proposing to limit the number of retail businesses in the City of Wilmer to two. Again, this is prescribed in states, in state law that we must issue one retail business per every 12,500 residents. So the minimum number for the City of Wilmer for retail businesses is two. Again, if, this was highlighted when I presented the overview to the council at the last meeting in December. If at any point, the council, throughout this entire ordinance, can change. So if that number would like, wishes the council would like to increase, that can happen. Moving on to Section 8, 374. So part of the application process for the preliminary, it'll be a preliminary inspection prior to retail registration. So prior to the issuance of any cannabis retail business registration, the city will conduct preliminary inspections to ensure compliance with the requirements of the ordinance and that it is compliant with all city ordinances. Section 8, 379, the annual compliance checks. Similar to what we do with alcohol in the City of Wilmer, there will be annual compliance checks that will be conducted by the Wilmer Police Department, which could include unannounced age verification compliance checks. If there are any failures, there'll be compliance checks for failures, and then other compliance checks. So notwithstanding, there are nothing in the section. If there's any additional state or federal laws, educational, research, training purposes, those could fall under those compliance checks as well. Moving on to Section 8-388, we highlighted the minimum buffer requirements within the ordinance. Statute allows the city to impose buffer requirements to schools, daycares, treatment facilities, and then public parks or recreational areas frequently used by minors. The city will be, is proposing to, is proposing the maximum buffer zones for each of those specific areas. So no cannabis retailer would be able to set up within 1,000 feet of a school, 500 feet of a daycare, 500 feet of a residential treatment facility, 500 feet with any public park or attraction that's frequently used by minors. Moving along to Section 8- Moving along to section eight, dash three eight nine, the zoning districts. Again, just wanted to highlight on the retail side specifically where the, where we're proposing for retail businesses to be set up, which would include the general business district, general business district two, and general business district three, as well as the central business district. So if you think of Wilmer, think of First Street, downtown would be your central business district, and then along east and west along Highway 12. And there are some other scattered sites throughout, and there is a map attached in your packet as well. Moving along to section eight, dash three nine five, this addresses if the city so chooses to be a cannabis retailer itself. So the council does have the authority to establish, own, and operate one municipal cannabis retail business. The municipal cannabis retail business is not counted towards that minimum or maximum number that would be prescribed by this ordinance. So if the city does have two retail businesses in town and does wish to pursue a municipal business, that would be in addition to. It would not count towards that maximum number. Moving on to section eight, dash four twelve, this would be, just wanted to highlight the registration fees and renewals specifically on the low potency hemp businesses that are currently existing. We'd have eight businesses in Wilmer currently that serve, or that are licensed to sell low potency THC products. Since the state has not started or launched their licensing process for 2025, the city did request or require that those businesses renew their application with the city at that license, at the city's fee scheduled license amount. When the state will move forward with their licensing process, we do have it carved out in this ordinance that those existing businesses would not be charged again for an additional registration fee with the city. Any new businesses that would come that are currently not existing in the city of Wilmer would pay the full registration fee with the city. But just wanted to specifically carve out those that are currently existing. Moving on to section eight, dash four thirty-four, this is specifically to temporary events within the city. So the state statute specifically will, Office of Cannabis Management will have a specific license for temporary cannabis retailers. While the city cannot strictly prohibit those licenses from being issued, we can put parameters around to where those events could be held at. We are proposing that light locations that would be prohibited from these temporary cannabis pop-up events, that they cannot be located within a residential district or on public Continuing on to, within the temporary, temporary cannabis license, we are proposing that onsite consumption of cannabis flower, cannabis products, low potency hemp edibles, hemp-derived consumer products, or any combination of these items shall not be permitted at temporary cannabis events. So again, we would be recommending to prohibit the consumption of cannabis products, low potency products, at these temporary cannabis events. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I will pause there. I tried to highlight some of the things that we brought up at the last council meeting. If there are any specific questions, I'd be happy to dive into those a little bit more. I will add this before, Mr. Mayor, just today, the Office Cannabis Management published a updated, updated administrative rules that would be, that's open to public comment at this time. So those were just released today. That public comment period will close February 12th, and then move through the proper channels it needs to at the state level. So while I think it's still important to proceed with the introduction of this ordinance and with the zoning ordinance to follow, the council should expect amendments to this ordinance in the coming months. But I still think it's, we're in a position to move forward with an introduction and adoption at the first meeting in February. And I'll pause there for any questions.
Any questions? Tom?
On 8.334, the suspension, are we going to get this tied back into with the, the lower hemp one? Because we had a problem with that last year. You know, with the, them selling marijuana at the place? So to prevent that from happening again, are we going to kind of get that moved over into our other one, or the CBC one?
Yes. Councilmember Butterfield, that's a great question. When, once the state begins their licensing process, we will effectively be repealing, recommending to repeal the existing THC ordinance. All of the cannabis THC, those types of products will all live under this ordinance. But until there is a state program officially put in place, we will be operating with two ordinances until that time. Thank you.
Justin?
There's a lot of Toms.
There's a lot of Toms.
I'm wondering about the temporary cannabis event section on the ordinance there. Would the same restrictions and like the, for boundaries that were provided for schools and childcare's and parks, would those apply to the temporary event license as well? It almost seems like those are two separate applications that people would apply for, and I don't see those same boundary restrictions.
That's a great question. We, I don't know specifically for that, if that, we can follow up on that and get a specific answer, but if it's going to be licensed as a retail... Councilmember Osk will clarify that at the public hearing.
Thank you.
I don't have a certain, for sure, answer on that.
Yes.
Kyle, do we have a, is there a limit on the lower potency hemp edible retailer registrations? Or is there no cap on that like we do on the Division Two?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Gardner. No, there is not a cap. We are not allowed to place a cap on low potency.
Thank you.
Mayor Reese, I'm curious for the buffer 1,000 feet, is that doorstep to doorstep? Is it property lines? Or where, where is that from? We're under the impression that property line to property line.
Anything else? Otherwise, I need a motion to call for a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Then we need a motion to publish the ordinance by summary. So move.
Take it.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
And that passes. Kyle, the introduction of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to complement the last ordinance that was just introduced by the council, this amendment to the zoning ordinance would, like I had mentioned, would complement all of the specific zoning districts where different types of cannabis businesses would be allowed within the city. If memory serves correct, there's right around 13 different licenses or business types that the state could issue. Retail businesses, micro businesses, mezzo businesses, cultivators, manufacturers, retailers is what, what we had just focused on, wholesalers, transporters, testing facilities, delivery businesses, low potency hemp edible manufacturer, and low potency hemp edible retailers. So throughout the ordinance, you can see we are trying to align where we best feel that these types of, specific types of businesses would work within the city, within city limits. Again, this would be the introduction of the ordinance. If there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those and even potentially call on Planning and Development Director Corbett to help maybe clarify any zoning
We, we need a motion for a public hearing on that same February 3rd date. So move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Gilbertson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Now we need a motion to publish the ordinance by summary. So move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
And Gardner.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Kyle. Next is a cooperative agreement for building official services, and I'll call on our Planning and Development Director, Christopher Corbett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For your consideration tonight is the cooperative agreement to enter into contract or agreement with three municipalities, surrounding municipalities, which are Atwater, Candy Ohio, and New London. And this conversation has been going on for almost a year now. The three communities as mentioned, their building official Jim Solhide is retiring in March, and so they have reached out to us, they reached out to the county and to the city of Wilmer and for, for our services. So for us to provide them with permitting and inspection services too. In your packet, you have the pending agreement or the draft agreement for your review. I have some background information as well that I can talk through. In your packet, you also have the workflow that we internally took a look at just to make sure that this could work. So I, I wanted to go over just a few things about the way this will work and, you know, to answer any questions about capacity for the city of Wilmer and our inspectors. You know, we, our inspectors actually brought this idea to us, once the county said that they didn't have capacity to do so. And this was done probably back in October 2024. And we sat down internally just to discuss our workload and the flow that we have. Since I've been director, our processes and internally our processes and our workflow has improved, and so we have made some improvements to that. So we took some time for, and had conversations with all three municipalities to really discuss to make sure that this was worthwhile and to make sure that we had a process in place that we could add capacity for them and provide them with this service. So in front of you and in your packet, through the workflow, we have really planned for a success and a rollout. I will have to say that this is only a pilot program, so this is only for one year. Each municipality will have their own agreement, and their scopes of services will be different. I'm happy to go through the agreement with you or the workflow if you feel the need to. And I'll take any questions.
Justin?
Just a quick question for clarification. Is the city of Pennock included in this agreement? It is in our documents, but I didn't hear you speak that name just a second ago.
Yep, no, you're correct. The city of Pennock did reach out to us recently, but they may have another option. They are, their building official is retiring, but they have a whole year. And so the three municipalities, Atwater, Candy Ohio, and New London, their building official, he will retire this March, and so we're trying to do just like some overlay to make sure that we're taking a look at all open permits, if any.
Okay. That sounds great. And I'd make a motion to approve the resolution to enter into a cooperative agreement with the surrounding municipalities to provide building official services.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Rick?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So these smaller communities, did they adopt all of the rules of the building code that we have, or are there some rules they haven't adopted?
Great question, Councilmember Fagerly. The surrounding communities have, they operate from the same international building code that we do. The only difference will be is their zoning map, and they have provided us with copies of all of their zoning maps.
Okay, so all the inspections that they do in Wilmer, they'll do in these small communities?
Correct. Based on the project, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
And Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you.
That motion passes. Next is a resolution to acknowledge donations for the fourth quarter of 2024. Verna?
Councilmembers, Mayor Reese, the city of Wilmer has received donations which have been acknowledged by the city administrator and expressing our community's appreciation for the period of October 1st, 24 through December 31st of 24. We received $100 from Steve and Emily Poss for the Wilmer Police Explorers. We received $100 from Darlene Bratberg for the Wilmer Police Explorers, $146 from, from a fundraiser for the fire explorers, $150 from campaign funds for Josiah Ampion for the Wilmer firefighters, $200 from Doolies Petroleum for the Wilmer Community Center, $250 from Iron Warriors MC for the Wilmer Police Explorers, $250 from the Iron Warriors Motorcycle Club for the Wilmer Police Explorers, another $250 from the Iron Warriors Motorcycle Club for the Wilmer Police Explorers, $300 from New London American Legion for the Wilmer Police Explorers, $300 from Mick Quinn Insurance Agency, Inc., from the Wilmer, for the Wilmer Community Center, $300 from Hormel Financial Service Corp. for the Wilmer Community Center, $500 from Edward Jones for the Wilmer Fire Department, $500 from Candy Ohio Power Charitable Trust for the Wilmer Community Center, $1,777.66 from the Wilmer Hockey Association for the Blue Line Scoreboard, another $1,777.66 from the Wilmer Hockey Boosters for the Blue Line Scoreboard, $2,375 from Walmart for the Police Department Shop with a Cop, and $2,500 from Hormel Financial Services for the Community Growth Events. And I would ask the city to approve, make a motion to approve this donation, the donation.
So move. Second. We got a motion and a second. Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
And Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Community pride announcements, anybody? It's called Vikings. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We're adjourned. Thank you.